Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the November fourteenth board meeting. I'd like to call this meeting order, ask Mr. Slade for a word of prayer and, uh, Mr. Slade, you would remember Troy Clark, uh, he's a building inspector, lost his mother. And, um, you know, putting him our prayers.
We opened the meeting today as always by invoking your presence here with us today. We, we know, Lord, that we should, uh, we should have, uh, your, your power and your presence imbued in this place so that we can effectively serve the people of this county. Father, I thank you that, I thank you love us, that you bless us abundantly, provide for us, you give us resources. Uh, many of those resources, Father, are, are people. Uh, they, they are folks that you have put in strategic places and you've, uh, and you've empowered them with skills and abilities and we thank you for that. We give you the praise and the credit and the glory you deserve. Father, I pray that as these men deliberate today, that they will find that what they are doing, uh, is accomplishing much for our community, Father, that they will be, uh, satisfied that they have done what they can to serve the interests of our people and that our people feel that they have been well served by the folks that have been elected to serve us. I thank you, Lord, that you also give us people who are willing to sacrifice and to put themselves in harm's way so that we might, uh, live in a community that is safe. I, I thank you for those folks and their willingness, their commitment to serve in Christ's name.
I'd also like to mention, uh, Keith's mama's having little complications and I think she's doing better now. So, don't want to forget about their family, remembering them.
Also, glad to see Keith got a haircut. Did, did you finish your house? You said you wasn't getting a cut till you finished your house.
Had to do it. All right, public comments. We got, uh, one, uh, Leon Seals.
How y'all doing today?
Good.
Leon Seals, uh, a lot of y'all probably heard of him, uh, from Prairie, Mississippi, a resident of Rankin County and my concerns today, um, I'm dealing with property situation in Prairie, been arrested multiple times, unlawfully arrested. A lot of people know how to beat a lot of charges dealing with this property, uh, family is still getting harassed as of today about this property situation. But first in Rankin County, I've been to the tax assessor office multiple times and everybody in the tax assessor office, when I've been investigating this whole situation, agreed on what's going on, uh, the neighbor's house is located on my property and he claiming homestead on his house that is on my property, but it's getting homestead on another piece of property. And from my investigation, uh, you can't claim homestead if the structure is not on that exact location. So my concern is when I go to claim homestead in this coming up situation, how am, how, how am I going to be able to claim homestead if his house is getting homestead on my property? And no one is fixing the situation, but everybody is, everybody knows the situation.
Was that what the court's about? I mean, going to court over?
No, sir, um, my property's not in court. To this day, everybody's saying my property in court, when you clearly could go to the Chancery Court and get the, get the, um, get the paperwork to see what's in court and my property's not in court, um, but seems like everybody's saying that, that my property's in court, but nobody verifying it.
Let me, this is a domestic, I mean, you have family members that are, uh, really against family members saying this property's mine and that property's yours.
No, sir, they no, they no kin to me, those.
Not family members?
Yeah.
Other than maybe married into it or?
No, no, no kin whatsoever, the neighbors, that's.
Just neighbors?
Yes, sir, just neighbors.
I remember you talking to us about this over.
Did you have it surveyed?
Yes, sir, I had a survey by guess cause something and I'd had attorneys, uh, my attorney, Ed Raina, like I said, on one of the charges when I was trying to remove the vehicles, uh, my attorney, Ed Raina advised the judge, none of Leon's property is in court and I beat those charges, but still to this day, like nothing getting did, um, and I know Jay Bishop is aware of the property issue. I seen him talking to the judge in Prairie at a restaurant, I walked up on him addressing my property issue, nobody want to hear it, so, I mean, it don't make sense how I can't step up and clean my property when I want to and one of the Rankin County deputies told me burn the house down. The property on, the property is on, the house is on my property.
Told you that?
Uh.
Which deputy said that?
Um, I'm not gonna give a name out, but.
Oh, okay.
I will now, if I have to, if, if, if it's, if it's wrong, I mean, the property belonged to me.
Well, I would imagine he wouldn't have a job any longer.
Um, what, what do you want us to do yet?
Um, I want this tax assessor deal to take this homestead off the structure and really the house should be addressed to my taxes. So right now, my taxes is wrong because it's a structure, it's a house on my property.
Well, if that house is gonna be on your property, you gonna have to pay taxes for it.
Right, right, and I like to pay taxes.
On that other house and yours?
Right.
You would.
Right, and I, if that's what the law requires, then that's, that's what I want to go by the law. Uh, whatever the law requires.
I think we need some legal advice.
So it's there in court, it's in Judge Roberts' court.
Yes, that's correct.
My property's not in court.
The one you're talking about is.
Is you a hundred percent show, is you a hundred percent showing that?
I know you're a justice.
Is you a hundred percent show my property in court?
You know what, I really don't care.
I see, there it is.
We can't take care of your problem.
I don't want you to take care of my problem.
Alright, well then you need to leave.
So is you gonna show up at the next gambling game, I'm it?
No, definitely not.
Yeah, you was at the house gambling game, I got a picture of you at the gambling game, so do you want to go there?
You already did.
Right, right, so.
I played cards, you were at a poker game, I was at.
Right, yeah, a league, a league of house gambling game. Okay, so you talking about I need to leave cause he friends with the mayor and the judge in Prairie.
No, you're just over here complaining to us and we have nothing to do with what you want.
The tax assessor, it's the Rankin County Tax Assessor, Jay Bishop.
Alright, you had enough time, time to go.
Uh, I think this is, who is the head of the supervisor?
Yeah.
Who the head?
The, the.
That'd be me, I'm, I'm, I'm the president and we.
So I should be speaking to you right?
Well, we allow two minutes for public comments and I, I think you've reached two minutes.
Alright.
Yeah.
So that's the, that's the concern I got then is this homestead.
Well.
If you give us a minute, we'll see what Mr., our attorney for the county.
Yes, sir.
May I give you some legal advice?
We will, from what I understand, uh, and it is limited, my understanding is limited because it, it's not a matter that involves the board supervisors, doesn't involve county, frankly, doesn't involve the tax assessor to the extent that, that, uh, that their office is handling any sort of homestead claims. They'll make that determination themselves, um, and figure out what to do. More than likely, what's happened here is Mr. Seal, uh, Seals, uh, secured a, uh, what's known as a tax deed, uh, by virtue of having bid on the property at the tax sale and, uh, became eligible because he paid the taxes that were owed, he became eligible to receive a deed once that tax sale had matured. And so that's the basis of his claim to ownership and possession, it's a tax deed. That is in, uh, that is not a, a, a complete transfer of ownership and possession. It's a presumptive transfer of ownership, ownership and possession, but in order to satisfy all of the law requirements as it relates to complete title to real property, a tax deed is incomplete. So you have to follow that up by filing a petition with the Chancery Court to confirm your title. That's how you achieve title and possession. Uh, so it would, it would be incomplete. The fancy legal term is incoat, it's not active in, as far as title is concerned. So Mr. Seal's claim to ownership and possession is not yet complete. The Chancery Court needs to address that issue. My suspicion is that that's what is in Chancery Court. Now, I, I don't know specifically what the boundaries of the property that are before the court are. There may be some argument that it's unclear as to which piece of property is, is in play here, but Judge Roberts, uh, needs to address the ownership and possession issue and determine whether or not Mr. Seal's claim is valid as against any other claim. Hopefully that makes sense. You guys are not in the business of calling balls and strikes on matters that are clearly and uniquely vested in the Chancery Court. It's up to Judge Roberts to determine who has title to this property. And once that determination is made and becomes final, then it's appropriate for the tax assessor to act to establish on the basis of who owns the property by virtue of a court order, who owns this property and therefore is entitled to make a claim of homestead. We don't know the answer to that yet, cause we're waiting for Judge Roberts to make that final determination. And as many times as Mr. Seals wants to come and tell you guys that he needs help, we can't help him. That is the Chancery Court's purview.
So with that being said, will I be denied homestead when I try to file a homestead, is that what you're saying?
Uh, until, until you have a Chancery Court order that says that your tax deed has been confirmed against all of the claims, we have no way to, uh, effectively and legally to allow for a homestead claim on that property. I stand to be corrected by the assessor if it's, if they tell me, no, we can take a tax deed and we can do a homestead. I, I think that's not appropriate where you've got ongoing litigation that is trying to address who has the proper claim to, to the property.
The tax assessor have told me they could correct it and I got that recorded also.
Okay, well, I, I would, I would strongly suggest that Mr. Seals takes his complaints directly to the Chancery Court and asks Judge Roberts to rule on whatever is before Judge Rob, whatever is before Judge Roberts needs a ruling.
Okay, if anybody get the time, they take a look at the Chancery Court and see what's on Judge Robert, what's on his hand and you'll clearly see it's not my property, so I'll just be back next time, I guess, trying to get answer again.
Well, did that help you out? Any, we got somebody like to speak?
Just the, as far as the assessor's office, we are waiting on the Judge Roberts' rule before we can change any property.
Okay, is that?
Well, the property that's in court with Judge Robert is G eight fifty seven ten. Anybody can look it up, um, you go get amended complaint from the Chancery Court and G eight fifty seven ten does not belong to Leon, that belongs to Willie Moore. Leon property is G eight sixty, G eight sixty one, that belonged to Leon Seals and it's not in front of Judge Robert's court.
G eight sixty one?
Yes, sir, and G eight sixty, and they house is located on G eight sixty.
Thank you, Leon.
Yes, sir.
Sir, if you need help changing a tire or something like that, you wave me down, I'll be there. Thank you.
Alright, next we have, uh, uh, Dave Van from Region Eight. Mr. Dave Van.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President, fellow board supervisors, just thank you so much for letting me come before you today. Uh, I'm Dave Van with Region Eight and, uh, this is my twenty ninth consecutive year to come before you and I'm very thankful for every opportunity that I've had to come before you.
We need pictures from that first year.
What was that?
From that first year you come up here.
Twenty nine. I looked a lot younger then. But I want to say that, uh, uh, again, I'm thankful and honored to be before you. Senate Bill twenty one hundred requires me to come before you face to face at least once a year, give you our annual report, answer any questions you might have about Region Eight, Region Eight services and, uh, uh, and so if you don't mind, Mr. President, I'd like to approach and give everybody a hang of report, is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Real fast, Mr. President, I'd like to say, uh, uh, in summary that, uh, Region Eight has, uh, five hundred and one staff members today, uh, here in Rankin County and we spent thirty six million nine hundred and forty three thousand dollars, uh, on this campus over here in the facility, uh, on Marquette Road, uh, in the last fiscal year and, uh, our ranking allocations of, or three hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars and in twenty nine years I've not asked for additional dime for Region Eight as long as we can balance our budget, that's what we do and, uh, but we do want to say thank you for your commitment to Region Eight and your allocations because it does allow us to serve everybody regardless of their ability to play. Uh, it supplements the costs of those that are indigent or underinsured and, uh, and we're so thankful that, uh, that, uh, we get to work and live in a, in a county where we have elected leaders that, uh, know the meaning of teamwork and, uh, spirit of cooperation and throw in a little bit of compassion there and, uh, uh, we got a, a, a great team of elected officials here and also I'd like to thank, uh, thanks some folks while I'm up here. Um, I promise I won't be here alone, but I gotta say thank you to Craig, Slade and, uh, we go back a long way, but Chancellor Clerk, his office, Keith and, uh, the sheriff back here, we have to work together mo- almost daily and, and the spirit of cooperation is like no other place in the world, I can tell you, and so I just want to, uh, thank you for allowing me to be a small part of, uh, of this big operation, uh, in Rankin County. Thank you for letting me live in and raise my family here in Rankin County.
Right, we thank y'all for what y'all do. Thank y'all for what y'all do and, you know, know it's a big responsibility and we thank y'all for that.
We're, we, well, we're aware of a portion of what y'all do because y'all do so much and, uh, we don't recognize everything all the time, but you do report to us and we are blessed to have you and Region Eight here.
Thank you for the kind words, I appreciate it. Hope you know that I'm always available twenty four seven if you need me for anything.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mickey Watson, Watkins.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. I also have some handouts, is it, can I bring these to you guys?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, good, good numbers.
Yeah, you do.
Good numbers.
It's okay, give out one, give out one too. There you go. Give Craig one, we're good, yep.
Okay, it's, it's that time of year again to renew your health insurance, uh, I wanna, I wanna tell y'all this because y'all have accomplished something that every, well, outside of one, just about every single group that has ever had Blue Cross Blue Shield Mississippi coverage with the help of these two guys and, and y'all, um, we're gonna be able to move your pharmacy April the first, just wanted to let you know, as y'all know, the good, the really good news is, is that your medical claims are down for the third consecutive year in a row and they're actually down substantially. Fortunately, flip side of that is your pharmacy claims have gone through the roof. Um, we're gonna have the opportunity to address that. Um, I think, uh, we have proposed, I think with y'all's blessing, proposed moving to Verus RX April the first. We have open enrollment next week. A representative from Verus will be here to talk to the members that, you know, where there are opportunities for both the county to save money, but more importantly, uh, to some extent, your employees are going to save money because if they decide to sign up for one of the programs that are available through Verus that typically aren't available through the PVMs that handle the business, uh, for the carriers, um, they do not utilize these programs. So again, this is, this has the potential to save huge money for the county on prescription drugs and again, no cost to your employees versus the copays that they're paying for their drugs right now. But just real briefly, um, through the end of September, and I just got the October numbers updated the other day and I'm sorry I didn't have, I don't have that updated on here. But, um, you can see your medical claims at the top far right column, you're just running slightly behind where you were in twenty twenty four. Uh, I want to pay special attention and this is why I think this is such a tremendous opportunity for the county is, uh, through January, uh, through, excuse me, through September of twenty five, if you take pharmacy out of the equation, you guys are getting seventy, seventy four, almost seventy four percent discount through Blue Cross Blue Shield. So it's great that they finally came around because we didn't necessarily want to leave Blue Cross, but we also needed to address the pharmacy and we were able to leverage that through some several meetings and everything. Not only that, but Blue Cross, uh, if you look at the very bottom of the page, uh, your reinsurance is going up ever so slightly this year. Blue Cross agreed to reduce your administrative fee to forty two dollars, it's currently forty six dollars per employee per month. However, like all carriers do, when we go to Verus, uh, they are going to, they charge a, a, um, connectivity fee, all carriers do this, cause they've got to get data in on the prescriptions they're filling so that your employees' amounts they pay out of pocket apply towards their benefits. And so, uh, it's going back to forty six dollars, but we blocked that forty six dollars in till January first of twenty twenty nine.
So, well, out of pocket expense for pharmacy still go toward your overall deductible, out of pocket?
It goes towards your out of pocket. It doesn't go towards your deductible, but it goes towards your out of pocket. So, yeah, anytime you pay anything out of your pocket, it goes towards that out of pocket amount.
Okay.
Okay, okay, whether it's a copay deductible or co- insurance. Um, so overall, this amounts to about a one and a half percent increase. We did send it out to a number of carriers, uh, for their review and I won't get into the technicalities unless you want me to, but basically they're saying that y'all, most of the carriers do not quote because they're saying that your reinsurance rates are so low that they, you know, they're well below what they call their manual rate. So it's very hard to get competitive quotes. The ones that we did get weren't even close to what you have and, uh, so anyway, uh, there's some more notes on the back, just some highlights for the year. You do have two lasers this year, uh, you're familiar with lasers, um, uh, one of them is, uh, both of them are on dependents that are covered under the plan. So, uh, again, outside of pharmacy, things have looked really, really good in twenty twenty five and we're gonna address that next year.
Right.
Questions?
Looks like we're gonna save a little money and offer a little bit, you know?
Well, I've implemented this company in four or five other clients of mine and the results have been staggering. So if the people unders, you know, and we're gonna try to explain it to them next week, but if people participate in those plans, you're, you're gonna save a lot of money on pharmacy next year.
And it should, it should save, it should save them some money as well.
It's gonna be mutually beneficial. Your employees gonna save money and y'all should save a lot of money on your prescriptions. And it's the same prescriptions they had yet if they went to Walgreens.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all, appreciate it.
Uh, do we have anybody else on the public comments?
Hey Shane, Shane, do you have anything?
Do you have anything?
No, I just have not seen y'all in a few months and was missing y'all.
We, we thought you might was gonna hang around and buy lunch. Okay.
I think lying to y'all is on our courtroom.
Hey, can, can I talk with Shane for, on one small subject?
Yeah, absolutely. Shane, you better go ahead and leave.
No, no.
Shane, you might as well, come on, come on, hold up.
I want to give you some information. Uh, the Pisgah project for the sidewalks did not make the cut with CMP DD, but we're communicating with M doc, you apply with both of them at the same time and it fall through, and I'm doing everything I can with M doc to hopefully have them catch that in a safety net for us, cause we need it really bad out there and. Okay.
We'll keep on, keep it on, keep y'all in the loop on, on what we've got going on.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Old business.
Motion to approve?
Second. Jay made a motion, Brad seconded that motion, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Consent agenda, has everybody had time to look over the consent agenda, any questions?
I make motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Jay made a motion, Steve seconded that motion, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Ms. Caroline Gilbert.
Morning.
Morning.
Item A, request authority to destroy the following records and y'all have the list of everything that we're cleaning out back there.
Make motion for.
Uh, second. Brad made a motion, I seconded that motion, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Item B, request authority to delete the property accounts for the mobile home taxes for accounts two seven one eight two, which is a duplicate record, one five nine four nine, which has been deemed unlivable and account two two three, which is also unlivable. And so we're gonna delete those mobile home accounts and the, um, tax bills for twenty twenty five.
Motion approved, second.
Brad made a motion, Steve seconded that motion, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Well, we, I was gonna put you down later.
You missed, you were being asked for earlier.
I heard, I'm so sorry, I did have a seven thirty meeting this morning, so, and it ran long.
Do you, do you have a problem going after Tim? He's got a meeting. Or you'd like to go ahead?
I mean.
I guess we'll go ahead with Ms. Stacy McDiener, she's already up here.
I can just let Christie go ahead and, and hang out in here with y'all. Okay, item A, petitions to adjust twenty twenty five homestead exemption supplemental rule.
Motion to approve, second.
Steve made a motion, Jay seconded that motion, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
And item B, um, there is a, a correction on that, so it should actually be petitions for change of assessment on just twenty five real property and then twenty four and twenty five on personal property assessments.
Just twenty five on the real?
Yes.
Motion for, second.
Brad made a motion, Steve seconded that motion, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Who made that error? In the, it's so we could address, I'm glad you called it. Okay, nobody, everybody likes to admit. Alright, Mr. Parker.
Morning. He messed up the bridge, didn't he? Uh, the item I have to discuss today with the board is, uh, on SA sixty one twenty five bridge that's on Bill Hubbard Road. Uh, the bridge is currently closed. We were, our inspection team was out there last week, uh, doing an inspection. Uh, there were some issues with some piles, just typical deterioration on piles, but, uh, ironically, at the same time they were out there inspecting it, uh, the dirt trucks were rolling and there were some fairly significant issues, uh, observed while the, uh, dirt trucks were coming across with those piles. So we made the decision Friday to post it at five tons, which we can, the county engineer can do that because we had to get the dirt truck off of it. So it's posted at five tons, uh, on Friday and that gave us time to assess it over the weekend and look at our data and, and so forth. And, uh, we got back together Monday morning and, uh, just felt like the best thing to do was close it so we could address the issue. Uh, and that's where we are today. Uh, and there's three bits that some of the piles need repairs on, splicing, shoring up. Uh, the issue with the, the bridge is old and the bridge has some really old decks on. Uh, the way the, the bridge comes up on the ends underneath it, uh, you, you gotta work those piles from the top, which means you gotta remove decks. So it comes a little more complicated with those old decks cause you, when you start removing and trying to put them back, uh, I, I'm afraid some of them may not make that transition or, or be in the condition to put back, we just don't know. I mean, when you're handling them with a trac over a crane, it, it, you know, you're, you're handling concrete. Uh, the, the, and it's, it's a domino effect. So if the decks break, we can't get those decks anymore. Great news is the new decks, which is two decks, since those fits the same elevation as those decks. The bad news is those decks are heavier, uh, and those decks are sitting on a cap, which means the cap. the cap, if you had to replace the deck span, you have to replace the cap. Well, you can get a cap for those decks. Problem is those caps are made for four pile spans. What's out there is a five pile span. So you're pouring a, a cap in place to put your decks back on. None of that may happen. Uh, you know, for under two hundred thousand dollars, we might could replace those piles and, or get the pile shored up and, and get the bridge back open in, in short time and, and move on. Uh, we're Bill Hubbard, Bill Hubbard, I'm sorry. It, it connects St. John, it's in the south part of the county in Brad's district. It connects St. John's Road with Clearfoot Road. It's a, it doesn't have any houses on it, but it's, it's a cut through.
It's a connect road between Clearfoot.
From Smith?
No. It's, St. John's would take y'all way to forty-nine, but sometimes people cut through from Clearfoot over to St. John's either go south or come back to Rankin County.
It's a fairly significant logging route and apparently is a significant dirt haul route.
I got you.
It's nothing but timber and a lot of big property.
What's your suggestion?
So the, the, so we've run, the replacement cost on it's one point four million. It's a big bridge. It's four at nineteen, three at thirty-one. It's a long bridge.
So are we going to try to fix it first prior to doing that?
Well, that, that.
You still going to have an old bridge at the end of the day if we get it fixed with that one deck.
Right.
In three years or four years from now, we, it's going to have to be replaced regardless.
Right. We don't, we, we don't know, I mean, it's, it's going to continue to deteriorate. There, I mean, that's, that's just the life of the bridge because of the age of it. Uh, when that's going to happen, I don't know. It may be that we would, we would put it on a ten, a twelve month inspection cycle instead of two year. The law is, everyone's got to be inspected every two years, but you can, we have the option to move them to, or request State Aid, put them on a twelve month cycle instead of twenty-four months.
So this bridge got that bad in two years?
Yeah, so it, it was deteriorating, it didn't get that bad, the, the, the dirt hauling is what, and, and potentially, there's a bunch of evidence of, of log hauling in that area too.
Six hundred acres of timber.
The deterioration, the, the piles are going to deteriorate.
A lot of, a lot of heavy traction.
And it's note, it's noted in the inspection report, it, two years ago, that the piles are deteriorating like that, I mean, that with, when they're exposed to air, they're going to rust. Uh, the issue becomes when you get that kind of loads on it repetitive, things can happen and, and, and go south quickly. Uh, and, and thankfully, our guy happened to be out there when, when that was happening and, and saw it.
Well, what, what would be the repair cost if?
I, I think if everything goes well and nothing else has to be replaced, you could do it under two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and we're work, we met with the contractor out there and have been steadily in communication with him since we met, they're with him this week. And we're, we're trying to figure out, is there any way to do this less than a replacement? But the replacement, obviously, I mean, you're going to spend a significant amount of money on a bridge that is, is not going to be a new bridge unless you spend the money to replace all of them.
Well, if we repair it for two hundred thousand and it makes it two or three years, two hundred thousand, we can do that several times before we get to a million, over a million dollars.
Right.
And there's no homes. We're just making sure this bridge is open for dirt hauling really.
If you do the re, the repair for two hundred thousand, is it still going to be a load limit on it or will it be up to?
No, if, if we do the repairs now, there's no indication to us that we would request a load rate. Now, the neck, in twelve months when we inspect it again, if things have deteriorated, we may request a load rate or State Aid may make us, may, may make us load rate it. I can't speak for them, but for my team, they're saying that if we fix the piles, we won't need to load rate it right now. But obviously in twelve months, that will be changed and it can be load rated and, and we don't know what it.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't give us twenty-four months on repair?
Sir?
Are you, you won't give a twenty-four month kind of warranty on the repair? I mean, you're saying, I understand you inspect it twelve months, but if you repair it, do you expect it to live twenty-four months?
I do, but it potentially can be load rated, but it, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be closed. It can be load rated at, at, you know, just where eighteen withers, but some trucks can, heavy trucks can come across.
Well, that's the only thing is really wanting to go across it. That's from what I understand.
Yeah, I mean, I, there's some, some.
I mean, there's some residential houses that use this road. The road's probably about three miles, two miles long, three miles long.
Mainly just a cut through road.
It's a cut through road, but if.
You see, you could repair it five times and still be less than if you put a new one in.
I don't think there's repairing it again. I think we only repair it once.
No, 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 no. That, that's if, that's if we take it apart and all goes back together well. That's just removing them and putting them back.
Something you're not understanding, Steve.
Steve, that's right.
Steve, something you're not understanding though, that's the minimal cost is two hundred thousand. Let's say that deck, they removed that deck and it crumbles, you're going to have probably another three or four hundred thousand to replace that deck. Then you're going to have to go back and replace the pylons underneath it because it's not going to hold what's there left.
If we start pulling the deck off and it isn't bad enough shape that it crumbles, at that point, can't we make the decision to put the new one in?
That's scary, but you read my mind.
That's what.
Uh, the way the, the motion is presented here would be to authorize repair, declare it an emergency so if there was something outside of the repair, it had to be done, it could be done. I, I think if, and I'm going to lean on Craig here, if we could also add or replace in this motion, then we'll start, we'll, 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 uh, go through all avenues to, to try to repair it and if it can't be, then we'll make the call with, I mean, obviously with Mike and Keith and whoever, Brad, and we'll make the call, uh, at that point.
And there is funding, that's in the bridge, emergency bridge fund or in the road department.
County bridge.
County bridge.
How much do we, we've got some in there?
Three million cash.
But not all of that's unspoken for. I mean, I know we got, what, a million and a half or two million dollars already planned?
Well, I've got that. I've already took care of that.
I think that's it. Maybe.
This is what I've got left to just sit aside for emergency.
Okay. Right.
All right, well, I'll make the motion as you presented it, that repair it and if needed, replace.
So the first sentence would read authorization for repair of bridge or replacement of bridge?
Yes.
Identified as SA sixty-one dash twenty-five.
I'm not that much.
All right. Seconded that motion.
Steve made a motion, Brad seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Hey, before Craig, Craig, Mr. President, before Craig, can I get Mike to come up and talk to me about bridge on Holly Bush Road?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Mike, yeah. Mike Harris, if you mind stepping to the podium. It's obvious you weren't prepared to come to the podium today.
Um, sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry about the surprise, Mike, but, uh, you, you know, we got a bridge on Holly Bush and you and I have talked about it over the, um, a few weeks ago, we were pointing at being finished by now and then last week you told me that they were going to be paving out there on Monday and that didn't happen. What, just tell me why, what happened?
So, uh, as of last Friday, when I talked to you, Friday, week ago Friday, paving crew was supposed to be there Monday. I met them Monday out there, uh, was anticipating them to.
Who's the paving crew?
Uh, I can't.
Okay.
Uh, I was anticipating them to have the paving equipment out there. They just had a guy out there and they said, well, we're going to pave it Tuesday. And I said, okay, but I said, I've got things in place. There's a process. You got to pave, you got to do other things, you got to inspect and do, so we had everything scheduled to do. So I said, you've got to be through Wednesday because I have inspection on Thursday.
And you still had to get it striped.
And I still had to get it striped in the process. So they come out there, started waiting till Tuesday to start, which it'd take a two day process because you got to put the base down and then come back and put the surface. And then Wednesday they come in and put the surface now.
But you said they started Tuesday.
Yeah, instead of Monday.
And they come back Wednesday and still put the surface down.
They come back Wednesday and put the surface on one side and they loaded up and left and went and paved somewhere else and then come back and paved one lane to the other side. Well, when the inspector showed up Thursday morning, we still liked the lane of paving and no striping. So we stayed, hey, does all our inspection on our new bridges now, so the guy, all he did was drive off.
All I know is it wasn't open even Friday. Cause I come out.
It was scheduled, it was scheduled to be open today with the paving crew when they kicked everything back a day.
Why is the paving crew not completing what they had started? Had they run out of asphalt or did?
No, they went and paved somewhere else.
It's beautiful weather and I've been promising people, you know, what you and I talk about because this has been going on for, this bridge is supposed to be finished already. And it seems like every day there's another excuse and I'm not saying on you, Mike.
I understand.
I know you're trying to get it done, but.
But then when I.
When we got a contract with somebody, uh, and it's, that's more than just that we might be there.
Well, this ain't the first time we've had issues.
So it's a small consolation, Steve. It doesn't answer or address the current issue, which is the timeliness of the work being done under our commodity bid, but this is a commodity bid. Uh, it was let in July. It runs from July one through the end of the year. Uh, before long, you guys will be authorizing a publication of notice to bidders on our commodity contracts. I'm assuming we'll set those for January one of twenty-six to July one, uh, and do it as we normally do. This is exhibit A of why you guys need to think through when you get ready to evaluate the commodity bids. Each of the bidders needs to be viewed from the perspective, what is our history with that bidder? What is our, um, in, what has our engagement with that particular bidder been, bid, uh, been like for us? Uh, what sort of responsiveness have we gotten? What sort of track record can we point to? And if, uh, because a lot of times we get so laser focused on price, we don't think about other things. So when we evaluate what is lowest and best, which is what the law requires us to do, part of your best needs to be, what has our experience been with that bidder? And if he's low, but our experience has been bad, especially in recent times, it's time to not choose the low, but choose the second low.
Well, this, yeah, I agree and, but that didn't fix us right now.
No, it knows.
My problem is.
We're not paving anything else.
It's Friday and it's supposed to start raining middle of next week.
And you ain't got your bridge open.
And, and I've got almost like five thousand people in the mornings that come through there and, and I'm getting hammered and that's why I'm hammering. I don't mean.
Oh, I agree. I mean, we get hammered every day at office about it.
The company's not out there right now currently getting the other lane paved.
It's paved, it's paved, it's striped now, but I mean, just everything got pushed a day longer than what it was supposed to be.
We just gotta get the inspector back out there.
And now I'm waiting on inspector and I'm, I'm speaking for Tim, but I don't think we have no confirmation of when he's coming back.
No, the, and Mike alluded to it a while ago, uh, recently State Aid, we've always done the initial inspections on bridges. Every awkward one we did, our team did the initial inspections. For some reason, uh, State Aid has taken the initial inspections away from the counties and gone with the consultants that do the bigger bridges in the county. They're doing all of the initial inspections. So, uh, we, we actually went to the, the inspector showed up the other day to inspect it when it wasn't paved. Uh, so we, we called, first we called State Aid and they said, well, I got to check with the inspector because they're inspecting their bridges and blah, blah, blah. And, uh, so we just went straight to them and said, look, we need some help. Can you help us here? And their response was basically, yeah, we'll get back to it when we can, but we got to hear from State Aid first for us to go back there.
What it means is you're going to the bottom of the list.
It's, yeah, and so, I mean, just put this note in the back of your mind, at some point, me along with hopefully some other county engineers are going to try to fight to get those back because they're, they're county bridges. Uh, and we think we should be able to inspect them the first time. We inspect them the second time.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, same people. Uh, so we want to fight for that. They didn't help you right here, I know, but getting on my soapbox, but to answer your question, we, we have no control of it. I, I can beg and plead, but that's all we can do.
This is an ongoing thing. And jobs in the last couple of years have been strung out and over and, and every time it's, well, they went to another job, you know? So, all right, I'm off, I'm done.
Yep. So I'll say something that, that Tim can't say, uh, I'll say it instead, uh, not, not even on his behalf, I'm just going to say it. Uh, the top of the food chain at State Aid is an appointment by the governor. And, uh, if there's dissatisfaction with, um, the, the responsiveness of that particular state agency, I would suggest making a phone call to the governor and ask, uh, if he is of a mind to motivate somebody at State Aid to get an inspector out there, like right now.
And turn back, turn the first inspections back over to the county.
Hundred percent. Go ahead and have the whole conversation if you get him on the phone.
Yep.
I mean, they could have, I mean, it takes about half a day to inspect a bridge.
Yep.
They could have started inspecting the bridge and doing, but it was just too easy for them to say, hey, it ain't complete, let's just move on somewhere else, you know? It was, there was plenty of work for him to do while other work was going on and by the time he got there, it would have been done. But, uh, that's what bothers me about it, he didn't try to make an effort about it.
It, it's frustrating that, uh, that everything was lined up for the inspection to be completed.
Yeah.
But our paving contractor let us down.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay.
Let's, let's just start from that standpoint. If that hadn't happened, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
Yep.
So to answer your question, I, I, I can't tell you where I'm at. I don't know legally where I'm at as far as opening the road up. Did we get our own inspector to inspect the bridge and inspect our bridges every day? To inspect this and move forward or do we just wait on State Aid?
It, it's a risk, gentlemen. Uh, my, my concern would be that, uh, that the office of State Aid takes offense to us handling our matters ourselves and pays us up on accessing funds that would otherwise become a rank in county. Uh, so we, we got to play in the sandbox with.
And we can't even get on their schedule. We don't have any idea when they can come back.
Maybe, maybe the governor could help us get on the schedule.
We got one, uh, I'll say.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Mr. Slane.
Gentlemen, the first item under my section is to set a hearing for the November the twenty-sixth meeting at nine AM. This is Charles and Darren, Charles Darren and Jennifer G. Ross and Angela Marion Dennis Nusen's property at eleven eighty-eight A, Regret Bridge Road, District Four property. I need a motion to set that for hearing on that day.
Motion.
Steve made a motion, Brad seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All, all of the other, the other six matters that are at the top of the second page of the agenda are to set a public hearing on the same day, December the fifteenth at nine, and those are all land use zoning, conditional use requests. I'd like for us to get one motion on B through G if I may.
I'll make a motion, set B through G for December the fifteenth.
Second. Brad made a motion, Jay seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Gentlemen, the next item is authority for the county coroner to handle create cremation of an unplanned body pursuant to the county's inadigent cremation policy and authority to issue check to be memorial upon receipt of an invoice.
I make a motion, second. I made a motion, Dr. McClellan seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Motion carries.
Next item is a little bit unusual. This is acknowledgement of receipt of a written request to vacate an amended plat that was filed on behalf of Persimmon Ridge subdivision. You see where it's reported in our land records. Uh, that request was received from the owner of the only lot that is reflected on that amended plat. Uh, and it, apparently the owner has decided that he does not want to, uh, to subdivide his parcel with this lot and is asking the board to set a public hearing for the purpose of considering vacating that plat and removing it from the land records. So that's what this is. We just need an authority to publish the notice of a public hearing and then to ultimately to set that public hearing for December the fifteenth.
I make a motion.
Second.
Steve made a motion. Jay seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Motion carries.
Gentlemen, if I may, uh, with your indulgence, this is not gonna require any action, but I did want to, uh, to go over it with you. With respect to our bond projects that the board has authorized and that are in some form of process, specifically those bond projects that, uh, that relate to facilities that are being constructed, we have the opportunity to place signage at each of those sites where activities will be undertaken so that the public knows who's doing that work, what is that work, how is that work being funded and who's responsible for it. So I wanted to, this is just an example. This would be for the Cleary Volunteer Fire Department in Siz's district. But that's what the proposed signage would look like. This would be pla, it's, it's probably gonna be on a four by eight sheet.
Does it say Siz's name on there anywhere?
It does not. Uh.
Shouldn't it?
Well, that, there's, uh, the, the problem with putting a supervisor's name on it, uh, should be obvious. The, the issue of putting all of you, uh, naming all of you on it is in play. The problem that we're having is I don't currently know precisely who my district two supervisor's gonna be, right? And so I don't.
I'm in now, so.
I don't know there yet.
It's Glenn.
I'm gonna say that I've got volunteers. But at the moment, I don't know. So that was a little bit dicey for your board lawyer to just try to make.
Put my name on some.
Yeah.
District two do a bail pro deal.
Come on.
We can leave your legacy here, man.
Well.
I can give you the spelling.
Is there an issue? And I'm just asking since Dr. McLeod, you know, was part of this. I mean, is there an issue?
Oh, I made a motion, put Dr. McLeod on there.
Okay. So, so, uh, so that is an option.
The new person can be on the next one.
Well, uh, and my thought process was this, I, I will, I'll, I'll take all of y'all's advice on this. But we got, uh, we've got a couple of projects, I think, that are gonna be District Two, maybe just one. Tax assessor, tax collector office is maybe the only one, right? With respect to that one sign, what I would suggest is let's hold up placing that one sign until we get past this election and then we'll place that sign after that if that's accepted. We can put both Dr. McLeod and.
No, it's okay. I don't know. It's not a big deal, man.
Hey, we, we need to save it. We're just taking home with you.
At any rate, this, this is the format. They, there will be uniformity. Each of the signs will look like this. Uh, we will work with each of you about the, the, you know, the insertion of, of the supervisor names. By, by the way, that, that, that is the intent. It's for all of the supervisors to be named on the sign. Okay? That is the intent.
Yeah.
We're just in a little bit of a weird situation here. So, does anybody have a problem with the, with the way the sign appears?
Myself, I'm weird situation all the time.
Like I said, this is gonna be a four by eight at least. It may be a eight by eight. I'm not a hundred percent sure what they're gonna come up with. It'll be mounted at the location clearly visible. It'll be on supports. So it'll be raised up. I, I think it'll make a nice presentation for you guys. I have, uh, I have each of the list of, of the projects, uh, in proposed signage form. I'll just go over those quickly. The district attorney's office is one. Holly Bush Road Fire Station is another one. I've got one for the Marquette Demolition Project, which I think would be appropriate right there on Marquette. Across from EOC and the safe room. One for Star Volunteer Fire Department and then one for the tax, tax collector, tax assessor office. So, uh, there's, there's six signs that could be placed for each project separately. Uh, if, if there are other bond projects that come online that you would like signage to be associated with it, we, we will have a form that can make that happen quickly. So.
Well, I think we might need to discuss, we might need one more, you know, so it shows us, you know, being paid for either bond proceeds, correct?
Yes, sir. So this is bond projects, that's correct?
You know, for the bridge, we just discussed in District Three, you know, replacing.
Is it a bond project?
Well, that's why, when, you know, we've asked the Brad, do you wanna make that turn from my.
Oh, you wanna make that.
Yeah, we put that sign up there.
Are you buying?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You knew where that was going, didn't you?
I was thinking Jay's project.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We like to take it out of his bond.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No.
Now, I'm good, I'm good with all that.
Are y'all okay with that?
Yeah.
We need to turn our, our crew loose to get these constructed for us. But, uh, does, does anybody feel strongly, uh, I, I'm being serious now. Is, is it okay for me to tell the folks that are gonna be responsible for getting this ready for us, let's just go and put Dr. McLeod on, on each of the signs? Are we, are we okay with that?
Yeah.
You okay with that, Dr. McLeod?
I'm okay with it. They're okay with it.
All right.
Yeah, I'm.
Wait, anybody feel strongly one way or the other on that?
I, I feel strongly that Dr. McLeod needs to be on there for serving in the capacity he has.
Very much so and done a great job. Thank you. Thank you for, for helping with Dr. McLeod. Yep. All right. Uh, we, I do have one matter in additional business to discuss with the board. I do not have an executive session.
Ah, come on.
Good morning, Mr. Hicks.
Good morning. Um, okay. The first item this morning is authorize, authorization for the board president to execute an agreement. Um, this is with JH and H on our Justice Center, uh, project.
For the roof replacement.
Yes.
I'm making motion approved.
Second.
Brad made a motion. Steve seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Motion carries.
Right. And, uh, you heard from Mickey Watkins earlier today and so our next item is authority to renew our medical insurance with Blue Cross Blue Shield uh, and reunion health services and service for our reinsurance as well as add, uh, Verus RS for our pharmacy services starting in April.
And our agent of record.
We've already done that, yes, sir.
All right. Motion approved.
Second.
Jay made a motion. Steve seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Uh, motion carries.
Um, the next item.
Thank you. So when we do this, are we gonna need a separate fund for the pharmacy to pay pharmacy out of? Or we all just pay it out of one pot?
It's coming out of the same pot.
Okay, all right.
We pay Blue Cross and pharmacy and health insurance out of the same pot. So this would just take that out.
All right.
Um, the next item, we had advertised our mosquito spraying services and, um, good news, bad news. Well, the bad news is we didn't get any response.
We didn't get anybody?
Yeah. Um, I don't know if there was a miscommunication with who we expected because we did expect at least one, um, probably two.
Our current one, right?
Yeah. Um, we did touch base and they, they had no idea it was advertised. So, um, we have a couple of options. That's what Craig's here for. Let's discuss those options.
Keith, before, before you go, on my bond project on Greenfield Road, I'd like to get a breakdown on where we at on the cost of, because there's certain money is allocated for that Greenfield Road.
Right.
See where we at after we replaced all the drainage pipes and.
Okay.
I need some numbers on that.
All right, we have those. Couple of options that come to mind. We can s- simply acknowledge that we didn't get any response and go back out for RFP. The problem with that is that we've got a timing issue now because we've got a contract with our current vendor that expires twelve thirty-one twenty-five. And I don't know that we can, we, we can go through the appropriate timing, uh, of renewal of the RFP. And by the way, this is professional services. I wanna make that clear. You, you're not required to go out for, for bid or for RFP. You can select a vendor without a formal RFP process. Why did we go through the RFP? Because you guys have consistently told us, we wanna make sure we're getting the best deal. So best way to do that is to, is to go through a process that calls for proposals and make everybody do apples to apples and submit how it is that they intend, they would intend uh, to provide that service for us and at what cost? And it's, it's easy to evaluate because we've got them side by side. We can look at them uh, and give you guys, uh, you know, an adequate information for you to make an informed decision. So one way to handle it is to acknowledge we're gonna be in a period where we likely gonna have a gap, thankfully.
It's.
Most of our spraying is, is gonna occur come April, uh, and not in January or February. Okay? So I think we'll be okay if y'all prefer to go back out for RFP. Another way to handle it is to go to our current vendor and say, give me your absolute best on a renewal. Uh, and let's, uh, let's evaluate that proposal from that one, our current vendor to give us a continuation of service, just to extend the current agreement for some period of time. And then hopefully that will lead to, to conversations that may be beneficial and you guys might decide we'll just stick with the same horse. But y'all gotta give us some direction on, on what you'd like to do.
I would like to have a discussion with the current vendor and see if he will continue at the same price, same services, and just let him know if you can't, then we've got to go RFP.
Or we can't come to an agreement.
If we, yeah, yeah.
How many, how many companies out there y'all know of?
Very few.
I mean, it's only a handful of this.
In the beginning, there was people that showed interest. Well, we did have an extra bid, I think.
One Time County did it themselves, didn't they?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I bet, yeah.
EOC did it.
EOC.
Yeah.
Well, that might be a possibility.
We done sold all that. All is gone.
Too much of a storm was caused.
Yeah.
Wow. We, we got out of the mosquito spray business fast.
I mean, it's all about optics.
Uh, well, really, the, the big thing they do is treating the wet areas, you know? They're putting poison out and, and that does more than spraying as roads.
Well, I know our west now this year is, how many cases do you know of? A hand, I mean, five?
I think we only have one reported when they went back and dug into it. It was early in the season, so we think it was a travel case. You know, they weren't, they went to another state and just had it reported when they got home. Um, but other than that.
We have one, one.
Hey, Richard?
Uh, one Brandon.
So, so we don't get notified that they're inside the city.
Oh, okay, well.
And, and guys.
He sent an email a couple of months ago.
The, the, the issue with trying to nail down, uh, an infection like that is that you don't know where that individual contracted it.
Yep.
That, uh, more than likely they were traveling somewhere.
Right.
Uh, so they live in Rankin County. It gets attributed to us as a west mile case. We have no idea where that viral infection occurred.
Florence. Yeah, I'm good with going, you know, discuss with them and.
We didn't have much, we didn't have much horsepower. Let, let me add one thing to the, to your thought process on why is it that, that there are so few vendors who are gonna be able to provide the service? One, one of your requirements is that your vendor has the capacity to do aerial application. Why? If we get an outbreak, we've got to tend to that aggressively. And so part of what we require of a vendor is that they can apply the product aeroly. That's typically done by helicopter or by drones. And there are very few providers that have the capacity, the financial capacity to be able to deliver that service. So why are we, why are we not likely to get more than two or three? Because typically they're gonna be nationwide based companies or at least regionally based companies. The guy over in, insert name of warehouse who's running the pest control is not going to be able to provide countywide vector control service for us. So this is a, this is a big boy game and I, I think there are very few that are gonna be able to provide the service.
Yep.
So we'll, we'll engage with our current provider and ask for their best proposal on an extension and bring that information back to you, but it'll be at the, uh, November the twenty-sixth meeting before we can get that to you.
All right, thank you.
Hey, Brian, do you know what Madison County does, does as far as? Do you know what Madison County does as far as their mosquito spraying?
I do not, but I can comment on it.
I'm just curious.
Is this additional business with you?
I mean, it's maybe me and Keith.
Combination of us. We've got a couple of our election commissioners here with us. Gentlemen, this is about your voting equipment and the proposals that were received. Quick reminder, you got two responses to your request for proposal on your voting equipment. One is from your current provider, Hart Intercivic. The other is from Election Systems and Software, ESNS. Uh, both of those vendors provided solutions in response to your RFP. Uh, the, both of the vendors are capable of delivering what was requested. Uh, both of the vendors have made, um, th- th- did excellent, uh, work in responding to the RP. Very thorough in their responses, uh, very helpful responses in terms of illustrations and explanations and descriptions and I, I just wanna compliment both vendors uh, for the work and the effort that they put into responding and helping, trying to help Rankin County make an informed decision here. Uh, we asked our election commissioners, uh, to evaluate those responses. They have provided very helpful information to us. You have before you, uh, some work that, um, that, uh, one election commissioner in particular uh, spent an awful lot of time putting together for you.
Who printed this out?
Uh, I think Sam may have.
I printed it out.
Man, I just wanna say thank you. You can read it.
Okay, Sam will print it out.
Yep. And so, uh, so we would suggest, um, uh, referring to these printouts here because I think they, uh, they do illustrate some of the distinguishing characteristics of the response between the two vendors. Um, I also have, um, uh, a, an email from election commissioner, Mr. Sorrentino. Uh, and, and he wants to point out that, uh, that the ESNS bid uh, was for a number of units that is less than what the election commissioners believe they actually need. And so the quoted price for the ESNS system, as quoted, reflects a number of units that is substantially less than what would be needed. And so in order to do an apples to apples comparison, you've got to adjust the ESNS quote to reflect a greater cost for component parts of the ESNS system. And so that, that, that brings the two prices, uh, closer in comparison, although there is still a significant difference between the Hart quote and the ESNS quote. Let me point out one thing in your proposal, I wanna, in, in your request for proposal, I wanna point out something that I think bears significant attention. And gentlemen, this is one of those things, uh, this is, this is an example where, uh, you, you have to pay attention to things other than just price when you are evaluating proposals. In your proposal, you, you made the following demand about any vendor. You said, Rankin County is requesting proposals for number one, a paper ballot based, single source election system. That is number two, provided by a election system vendor who is located inside the United States. Right? That makes sense to everybody. And then number three, capable of providing and supporting an election system suitable for Rankin County's needs. Rankin County seeks a voting system that provides the highest level of security, transparency and auditability. Means we can look at election results and be able to go back and figure out what happened. Right? So those are, that's the big picture perspective of what we were looking for. The desired system will be easy to use, easy to maintain and easy to transport and set up. Don't think about that, but we, we gotta know, is this gonna, is this gonna be tick leash equipment that's gonna have to be monitored constantly? Are we gonna have trouble with it operating adequately? Are we gonna have to have it maintained inordinately? Are we gonna have to hire extra people to maintain it? Is it hard to code and to make ready for an election? Is, is, is the ease of use a problem? But all of that stuff has gotta be kind of under evaluation here. The voter experience when using the system must leave the voter with a high level of confidence in, in the integrity of the system. It makes sense. We want our voters to say, that was easy and I feel good about how my voting process went. And, uh, I, I don't wanna speak for the folks that are actually running the election as if I know completely what it's like. I'll tell you from my experience as a voter, I am very happy with how our voting process goes. It's super easy for me as a voter. I walk in, hand somebody my license, I get a little piece of paper. I walk down and hand it to another lady. She hands me a ballot. I go, I go vote and I put it in a scanner and I walk out. She hands me a ballot, I go, I go vote, and I put it in a scanner, and I walk out. It's super easy.
You get a sticker that says I voted.
I get a sticker that says I voted.
Yeah.
I made, I made democracy count.
Yeah.
Alright, so that's, uh, that's in your proposal, by the way, that's what we want.
Alright, did, did we find much differences, or did our election commissioners say, ooh, this one's?
I'm almost finished.
Okay.
I'm almost finished, and the answer to your question is going to be, there is a difference. To achieve these ends, Rankin County will demand and require that any proposed system be certified by the United States Election Assistance Commission to the latest voluntary voting, voting system guidelines, VBSG. They have, they have to have a system that has been certified by the ES, EAC to meet the highest standard as set by the United States government. VBSG two point zero. Why would we require that? That sounds arbitrary. Why would we require that? It's because our president executed an executive order, number fourteen two forty-eight, on March the twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-five. It says, every voting machine that is used in these United States will be VBSG two point oh. That was done March of twenty twenty-five. There's one.
So, one of these.
One is two point oh, the other one is not yet certified. And will not be certified for some period of time because they haven't even completed their application to be certified. They expect to submit that certification sometime in December of this year. And if they do get certified, they will be two point oh certified, but up until this point, they are no, they are not two point oh certified. ESNS is not certified. Hart is certified two point oh.
But they possibly could be at the end of December.
Possibly could be, but nobody will know that.
When they submit their application, it's gonna take twelve, fourteen months.
Well.
So, you're saying we legally cannot use that machine?
You guys could say, well, we said that, and we're okay backing up from that and going with a less quality or less, le- less integrity certified machine.
So, the total price difference between the two is?
Good luck.
I calculated it about three fifty to four hundred.
Around four hundred thousand, four to five hundred thousand.
Yeah, y'all are welcome to come on up.
Come on up.
And give, give the guys your thoughts.
Yep. Yeah, cause we definitely need a recommendation from our election commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
First of all, the printouts y'all have, they're wrong, I found my errors, I told you there were probably some, I found them actually. And then we're still adjusting our numbers that we need versus what we have versus what ESNS quoted.
Talking about the scanner.
I'm talking about all three units.
The numbers, yeah.
All the equipment, the numbers, we're, we're still up in the air. Um, some stuff to point out. On the consumables for Hart, they've got a lot of the V-drives, the Ductator, the Verity Key, all the things that are required for the Vanguard Hart syst-, the Hart Vanguard system. Uh, ESNS has got those similar equivalent consumables worked into their per unit price. However, the difference is Hart is a lot more expensive, and here's one. Hart's stuff, V-drives, all the things are created specifically for the Vanguard system and don't work. You can't go to Office Depot, buy a flash drive and stick it in and use it if you lose your V-drive. From our understandings, when ESNS came and talked to Tony, we believe that theirs is a basic USB drive that you just, it's not as secure. Um, I don't think they have the same level of double two-factor security that Hart has now built into the equipment. And a lot of the doors where you insert these things into the equipment, once you load the election, on Hart, they are built inside the machine so that once you close it up, you lock it, but that inside thing has a seal too and a lock too. So, there's two locked doors you gotta go through, I'm looking for you to the, can't see that. Two locked doors you gotta go through, you gotta get through the first one, then you gotta get through the second one. ESNS is, I think I remember, correct me if I'm wrong, I think most of their doors were all external. So, it's one lock you gotta get through to get to the part that you can hack or tamper with. So, security wise, yeah, we're paying more with Hart, but theirs is a more secure system according to our actee, your Tony. That's one big thing.
Let me talk to him about numbers. So, the security is a big part, but I know y'all want to hear numbers as well. So, Craig talked about scanners, they're fifteen off of what we would actually require, but much less is the ballot on demand where they only put two. And Hart had fifty-six.
Andrew's talking about ESNS support, right? Okay, so it's clear.
This is Trey, by the way.
I'm sorry. I, the whole, this whole time I've been telling you the wrong thing, Trey, I apologize.
No, you're fine.
Uh, uh, the, uh, he, he's talking about the ESNS quote being fifteen short on units. I just want to make sure that y'all are clear, which vendor is he talking about?
So, did we ask them, did we tell them what we wanted?
Yeah, we told them what we wanted, they know what we wanted. ESNS, it's not fifteen short, it's fifty-six short.
It's fifteen short on scanners and fifty-six short on ballot on demand. It's two hundred ninety thousand from Hart's level. So, it's not a small chunk of change.
I mean, how does Hart come up with their number? Did they go off y'all's number?
Hart went off of what we currently have from them on the other system.
I got you, okay.
And we actually tried to adjust that because we've learned things too.
In our proposal, we gave all vendors the specific numbers of units of our current system, right? Keep in mind that ESNS's system is different from Hart's system.
So, ES.
So, they're just kind of.
They're saying we don't need that many, or maybe?
Well, two things, yes and no. Yes, their system is different, but it operates the same.
Yeah.
ESNS is bound to determine that we have too much equipment, we apparently are not doing it right. Which I disagree with.
So, do you think we need to stay at the level that was, we put out a bid?
I think we can drop a few of those levels a little bit, not drastically, like ESNS did. We're trying to, that's what Trey and I've been debating numbers back there. Um, because a lot of it doesn't have to do with the capabilities of the equipment, it has to do with your precincts and your turnout, and who's running them versus who's using them. There's a lot of factors besides the equipment's actual technical capability. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
At a presidential election, we'd have more scanners than a normal election.
Yes, and Hart is swearing, we should not, I mean, ESNS is swearing, we shouldn't have to do that, they are saying we do not have to have ballot on demand because one of theirs will print a version of the ballot if we run out of pre-printed. But our Hart equipment does that as well, fundback, and it's the ADX machine. We utilize it to vote the affidavit voters. And demand is a difference, it, the flow is better, and I don't see how cutting out that ballot on demand is gonna improve the flow. I don't think you can keep it at the levels that now.
Well, that was a big part of why we chose them originally, was that other vendors wanted us to pre-print ballots and guess at how many we're gonna need. And so, with this system, we can print them as we need them.
At the precinct.
At precinct, yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
And it, it matters a lot when you have split precincts.
Because if you hand out the wrong splits, you can be contested and have to rerun it, and that's twice the cost.
Tony, on some of our splits, uh, I'm just thinking like the Rich one, for instance, we, you may have six ballots.
About forty-six, sixty-seven, yeah.
Right, so you gotta have separate stacks for each of your pre-printed ballots, and how many of each one do you need to print and?
And keep in mind, you're in a primary, that number of splits doubles, cause you got those splits for your Republican ballots and your Democratic ballots, and so, it's a lot. And we've already been through one election where we almost.
So, what, what are we doing with all the printers? Are we swapping all those out?
Are they taking trade?
I, we asked Bob if, you're talking about all the freestanding?
Yeah.
We asked him if that was part of their buyback. I don't know if he has answered us because he was uncertain. If we keep them, whoever needs a printer in the whole county, we got you covered.
So, do we bid for new ones?
The new system eliminates the need for one because it's a built-in to the unit printer, is an improvement.
Okay.
The other, uh, we couldn't have this external printer, I don't remember now. Anyway, one of them has an external printer still, the other one they've made a built-in printer to eliminate the extra large.
I think ESNS has the external and Hart has the built-in.
Hart has a built-in, but one of their pieces still has the external.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, the, these.
But they're changing the printer brand, so regardless, none of the printers we have now work with the new system.
The current system that we are using right now, how long have we had that?
Ten years.
Ten years.
Ten years, and according to our, how often Rankin County has run special elections over the ten years, is the equivalent of approximately twelve to thirteen years of use.
I mean, is it, does it not functioning is why we need to get them?
They have a lot of issues, a lot of.
They have a life of about eight years.
Yeah.
The, um,
Yep.
rollers is, uh, a, a lot of repair issues, and even the repaired ones from, what, was Stevie Gate two years ago? They're doing it again already.
So, in your proposal, you required for e- any vendor to certify in their response that they would provide us with units that have a minimum ten-year life expectancy. That's about the max.
That you're gonna get out of.
Technology like this, you can get ten years. And so, they, each of the vendors has certified to us that we can expect a ten-year life expectancy for either of these systems.
Would there be any reason if we went with one of these vendors, that they would have come back in four years and do an update?
Oh, we do updates regularly.
Y'all do them, or?
We usually do our own updates, now they will come on site, but you gotta pay a lot of money for that.
Well, that's what I, I want to know.
And Tony's so good at this stuff, and he does it.
Who is?
Tony, Tony.
The, 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 the software's updated, but the hardware's pretty much the same.
Yeah. The hardware is, as it breaks, you can get it fixed.
Well, after y'all reviewing all aspects.
We still stand behind Hart.
Even with Hart, okay.
There's a lot of other reasons.
So, I mean, we can't really vote on today, if y'all don't have all your numbers together, how many we need and all that.
Yeah, won't, won't you, when y'all get everything together?
You, you can select, you can select the vendor, because the next step in the process is to literally put together an agreement.
Okay.
And so, we will tell whoever you select, because you're basing it on your observation and their recommendation of which of these two systems is the best system for us, regardless of what the component structure is. Which of the two vendors provides the most closely aligned response to your request for proposal?
But you're saying they didn't, it's not apples for apples on what they bid?
Correct. It was real, that's why this has got so many errors, it was real hard.
I think it was a clever way to lower the price.
Right, so we can go back, you know, for Hart and negotiate a little bit with them since it's not apples for apples.
Well, we don't have a formal agreement yet, because if, if Ms. Tanya says, and, uh, if Trey, and I guess Andrew, uh, if they say, you know, we said in our proposal that we're currently working with eighty-seven units.
I can't tell you.
Okay, but, but, but we think we'll be okay with eighty-two. Well, that's naturally going to.
Lower the price.
Just the number, right? So, we, we haven't finalized anything, and you guys are gonna have to approve a final form of agreement, which with that, with, with whichever vendor you choose. So, my, my thought would be, you've got a recommendation from them, you know that there is going to be some increase in the cost if you go with Hart over ESNS. Uh, but if you're satisfied that you've heard an adequate explanation for why you should spend more for the Hart system, then you would be on solid ground to make that selection in accordance with their recommendation, and we'll move to the next step.
Well, I don't, I don't think, well, hold on a minute now, Steve. We don't need to clarify one over the other right yet, because then they got us, we need to work them and see if Hart can come down some, you know, you know, let them know where, you know, where.
You love lavish prison.
Yeah.
It sound like a asphalt.
Well, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, we, we got some negotiating room with, with that much money, you know, see how bad Hart wants it versus.
They might tell us, we don't want it no worse than what we showed you.
Well, but if, if not, then I, we might have to go the other route.
Now, I don't want, we, our history with Hart has been, I mean, we've got a long history with them.
You got four hundred thousand dollar worth?
Well, Tanya was here for the first rendition.
Kelly and I were here last time we had ESNS.
So, y'all had them previous?
Yeah, they were, they were the one before Hart, and we had that equipment for thirteen years, and when I say it was a rough last
Yes.
four, three, four years.
Yep.
The service was terrible, the support was non-existent.
Oh, it was rough, man.
They left us hanging on a lot of things, and then they turned us through us, I mean, it just got messy.
We paid, we paid maintenance. We paid maintenance back then for all the hardware. And we had battery, even though we paid, paid maintenance, internal batteries would go out, they kept the clock.
All of them.
And then we had to pay to get all that fixed, even though we paid maintenance contract.
They were supposed to, they were supposed to be maintaining them.
Any way they could mess us up, they did, and the current team, Bill, like, they have promised, if they don't get the bid, they'll be good sports about it, we'll still be buddies, they'll still come and see us. But they have not promised that they will change the type of professional service, that's my issue, I don't care if you're a good sport, I'm not gonna have to listen to you.
Right.
I want the service, I want the promise that your service and your, your support's gonna come up to speed. And they won't address that.
I think the last thing I'll say is, our poll workers are very familiar with Hart.
Yep.
And the voters.
That's big.
Voters are familiar with Hart.
And also,
Ten years now.
ESNS's system, while similar, has a few more steps in it that make it more complicated. I can't tell you the chaos that's going through in every precinct for several elections.
Poll workers being familiar with it is a big thing, because they're the ones in the mornings that get there, and when there's some problems, uh, they can eliminate those problems if they're familiar with it. And with Hart's equipment, in my district, I'm gonna say, a very high percentage of the time when we had a problem, it was a problem with the way it was set up, or the way they plugged it in, or they didn't plug it in, uh, it wasn't the equipment that was failing. And, you know, so the, the poll workers being familiar with setting it up is a big thing.
And paper, papers out.
And, and right, you know, you don't have enough ballots for everybody to get it.
Right.
Send down here to try to print some off and get them thirty miles up the road to a precinct.
And I don't think we've discussed this, but VBSG, if we run the election in March with the new Hart equipment, we'll be the first in the country to do that.
Well, I remember them saying that when we was, I was at the.
So, we'll get some political wisdom from that.
I, I think so too.
I would say let's, like, an agreement to negotiate uh, with Hart and see what the best deal is we can get and.
There are numbers on how many units.
Right, because.
We're gonna work two different angles for you guys, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna evaluate and solidify precisely how many of each components we feel like we have to have. And then we're gonna ask for a price to be established on the basis of those numbers, and come back to you guys with that. But what I need, what would be helpful because of our timing, here we are, November the fourteenth. We desperately need equipment on the ground, no later than twelve thirty, one twenty-five. I, I need equipment here by the end of the year. Why? Because we have to get trained and set up for a March federal primary. And Hart has said specifically in their response, if you don't let us know that we are your chosen vendor by November the twenty-sixth, we can't guarantee that we can get you machines. So, today is our last best opportunity for y'all to tell us, we're gonna ride this horse, go get us a price, and let's get it nailed down so we can get equipment in hand.
Well, if, remember back in Naveron County, when they run out of ballots and they had people out, out to the street wanting to vote? And how much, I mean, it's just terrible.
Bad publicity for.
We've had similar issues back with ESNS.
But not countywide.
No, not countywide, uh, it, it's a valuable thing to be secure, comfortable, that the equipment is gonna work, because on, on election day, when people stand in that line before they go to work or after they get off work, and, uh, they get told, we have a problem in here, we don't, we don't have enough ballots, we gotta wait till they bring us some ballots. Or whatever the problem is, uh, I just think that the security of. I just think that the security of having a, a company like Hart that we work with and familiar with, and our poll workers are familiar with.
And your voters.
And voters, that's right. Uh, it's worth, I mean, you can't put a dollar on that. It's kinda like our sheriff's department. People don't realize how valuable they are till they need them. Uh, well, they're there when we need them, and that's the valuable thing.
Alright, so what do we need to do?
Just a motion to add this item to the agenda.
I make the motion to add this item to the agenda.
Second.
Jay made a motion to add, Steve, second that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
I need a motion to...
Well...
A motion to select Hart Intercity as the chosen vendor under your request for proposal for voting equipment, and to authorize, uh, the administrative side of the House to enter into negotiations further to an agreement to provide that voting equipment, and immediately get that pricing for you guys and communicate that back.
I'd like for Seid to make that motion and be involved in, uh, the final figure.
Well, we're, we're messing up, you can't, you have nothing to negotiate on if we choose one or the other. They got us. You have to have both of them playing the party to negotiate. You can't negotiate if you pick one with, because you have nowhere to go to.
Unfortunately, state law does not allow us, but state law does not allow us to negotiate with one or the other vendor. You got to select a vendor and then we'll get a...
Seid, you don't think they watch our meeting?
No, I'm just saying, you don't have to go with one or the other. You can go with one or the other, that's what I'm getting at.
You are the president, you make the motion, whatever you wanna make.
Well, we're gonna go with Hart, I mean, we're gonna go with Hart. You know, that's what y'all wanna do.
I want you to be happy with whatever we do when we come, you're the president.
We're four hundred thousand dollar difference.
Well, we're not sure, because we don't shoot, we hit with a bat.
There's a couple of other things that you might cannot know.
Okay, so y'all gonna, y'all gonna trim it up some?
We're working with Hart to trim that.
Okay.
And it's, like she said, it's not apples to apples, because ESNS is hiding some, excuse me, ESNS, I don't know the right terminology, but y'all disguise some of the things to make your price lower.
That's what I'm getting at, they're not apples, they're not dead apples to apples on the comparison, you know? It sound, you know, Hart's got a little bit different system, and, uh, then ES does.
There's about seventy machines, that's the difference there, so there's a huge gap in price.
Seventy machine, which would be about hardly six thousand something a piece?
But we might can cut, when y'all get to final numbers, y'all can still trim down some of it.
Yeah, if you go to the very end of the printout, there's a unit comparison to, to the best of our abilities. And it'll show you Hart is higher on two of the units, ESNS is actually higher on one of them. But for a setup, for a precinct, for one of everything, they're only about four thousand dollars. That's where I learned, that's where you...
It's a couple hundred thousand is, is gonna be the difference in price. That's a good estimate of what you're talking about. The ESNS systems are probably gonna save you a couple hundred grand over the, over the, uh, based on the numbers that we think we're working with.
But, but if they're not the...
Alright, I make the motion to, uh, award, or choose Hart as our vendor and negotiate and start negotiations.
Well, you can't negotiate, but I second Jay's. Jay made a motion, I second the motion.
We can negotiate with Hart.
Yeah.
We cannot negotiate with the other vendor that we're not selecting, or why they want to.
Right, no, but that's what I'm saying, but I'm just saying Hart don't have to negotiate now.
Well, just tell them we just do straight ballots, take them through to court house.
Yeah, we can do paper ballots.
I'm not crazy about us, uh, just doing way, not need, I guess we ain't need those printers anymore. Right, with the new system?
We were already gonna have to get rid of them because the company went out of business and we're having trouble.
Okey-Dade is out of business?
They shut down.
Really?
That's why we had to buy such a stock.
Oh, so we can't give them away now?
We can give them away.
We can give them away.
We can give them all over the county that we have tons of...
But when they break, they're done.
Yeah.
Alright, we got a motion and a second.
Yeah, all in favor?
Ah.
Motion carries.
Thank y'all for your work.
Thank y'all.
Hey, before we end, I, I'm, I'm, Mike, you know, we still haven't got our dumpster site opened up yet. I would like to get an update again on where we stand this month.
You missed the ribbon cutting, we did that this week.
And it's open? No.
So this past week, we were able to finally get NPG to come install meters. We've been waiting on that for three weeks.
Okay.
Uh, it's been a process.
Alright.
So we have power, we have computer, we have, I think, everything we need. The only thing we're lacking is some security issues we're working on right now.
So the credit card, the debit machine or whatever is up, it's gonna be installed Monday?
So what else are we waiting on? Some cameras or something?
Uh, there's cameras and stuff that ain't in place, but we got them, we just have to get a vendor to install them, Jay.
Or are we gonna wait on opening until we get that done? Alright, yeah.
We'll have to, but we're, we're gonna try to get open in three weeks.
I would post something on market and letting folks know on such a such a day it's gonna be...
Shoot, we're gonna have a dang ribbon cutting.
Prior is, we're gonna have, I mean, we have talked to Waste Management, we'll get a schedule set aside of, of bringing open this thing, and, uh, so what we are gonna do is, we're gonna, shoot, we're gonna post the price list and the changes and everything that are rolled up so everybody is aware when they move down there, everything will...
We, we need to go ahead and put that out right now.
We are. Have we confirmed that price, man? It's gonna be kinda in quarters.
What is that?
Compact. Waste Management will do that, but, I mean, we just got, we just got the meters installed, electrician that, where we did all electrician, got to come in Monday and kinda sweep through everything, make sure everything's working.
So aside from that, we're good to go. Like, we'll be ready to open in two weeks.
Sure, thank you, I would like, I'd like to wait for that.
So December one, we in business?
Second.
Okay, alright.
Second.
Alright. Yeah, so you do need to go ahead and get all of that flyers printed up, put it at our current location.
Chuck, you might need to run something on paper too, or...
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna be a change, for sure.
Our new website will be coming online, this, this coming...
Can we get a copy of it?
I think you had a copy of that.
Well, he gave us paper, I wanna see the actual.
We'll send you the link.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, do we have any need for, is that good, Benny?
No.
Are we recess or adjourn?
Recession.
Recession, November twenty-sixth.
I make a motion recess November twenty-sixth, second.
Jay made a, I meant Brad made a motion recess November twenty-sixth. Dr. McLeod, second that motion, any further discussion? All in favor?